Psalm one hundred verses one through three. Make a joyful noise to the Lord, all the earth. Serve the Lord with gladness. Come into his presence with singing. Know that the Lord he is God. It is he who made us and we are his. We are his people and the sheep of his pasture. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we know that we come before your throne of grace, all of us beggars, all of us pilgrims. Neither one of us any more superior or any less worthy than the others. All created equal in your image. We all are like your sheep and we need our shepherd. We need to protect him, a protector and one who will direct us. We thank you for this wonderful country that you've given us, this wonderful state, this county to live in, to work in, to have community, to be able to serve each other, to be able to worship you freely. These were hard fought and hard won victories and were sacrifices by untold hundreds and thousands and hundreds and thousands of servicemen and servicewomen throughout the course of our country's history. And we praise you for that. We pray this day that our supervisors, Fitch, Stansell and Hobbs, as well as each of the county and city employees will have understanding, will have competency to do their work, not just this day, but this week and the rest of this year. And during this day's meeting in particular, would you pray, dear God, for these elected leaders to have your strength to be able to lead in virtue and in repentance, to promote what is diligent and prudent, to be surrounded with wise counselors and to be able to make wise decisions, to be protected from wicked influences, to be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to become angry, as James one nineteen says. These things all being in accordance with your holy scriptures. Would you pray in the matchless name of Jesus Christ? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rachel.
All right, let's go ahead and call this.
How do you say it?
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting's order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Supervisor Hobbs here.
Supervisor Stansell here.
Supervisor Fitch here.
Okay. Review of agenda, is there any changes or disclosures of conflict of interest?
I will have disclosed I have a conflict of interest on under resolutions for board consideration. Jay proving higher of George Jay Fitch as weed commissioner roadside manager. Jordan Fitch is my nephew, so therefore Jordan's been there for fifteen years way before me. He's incredibly competent, but I will recuse myself, so no one, just to be honest and fair.
Okay. All right, for that going in, anything else? Otherwise, I will consider a motion to approve the agenda, consent agenda.
So.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, we have department head reports and discussion. Mike, you were up.
Yeah. Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Yeah, great to be here. I hope everybody packed lunch. I tend to ramble on. No, actually, we have a lot of stuff to go over today. I have Cole, Terrence, my assistant here, got to help us with the conversation today. I've got one thing right off.
Please still there.
Oh, can you please mute yourself? Sorry, Mike.
Yeah, that's fine. I've got one thing here I need to bring to the board's attention that was not on the agenda. It's just a report. As you know, utilities are private code are allowed in a road system. They're allowed there to place their utilities. Glad they're there because they serve the county with multiple things, water, electric, fiber optic services, et cetera. Currently, right now, Madison County has several utility permits that are active for various things. Just like I said, various utilities. We also have rural fiber projects that are going on in different segments of the counties with different contractors that were awarded those type bits through, I believe, the state of Iowa. We'll let Ryan talk about that, maybe some other data here. Just a little background history. So they started a little bit of this work here, oh, in the spring here and there. Some of it's still going on. However, we had a problem with, and I know the map's kind of hard to see, but one of the contractors in the southwest quadrant of our county has a permit, started some work, and like most construction, this can be challenging at times. And we ran into a few challenging moments with that contractor. As part of the permitting process, we lay out guidelines to hold harmless the county, of course, for anything that happens there. And basically, they have to put it back the way it was. So disturbance of the ground, drainage is a huge issue with the road system. So if your ditches don't drain because of that, then we need to have conversations for them to fix it. I don't remember the exact date, about three weeks ago, Cole, would that be right?
Yeah.
Three weeks ago, we had some issues with this contractor. Ordered them to make some changes to their systems, correct things. They said they did. They were noncompliant in several situations. So as of last week, I put the permit on hold. They're not allowed to come back until they make corrections to this stuff. They're well aware of what's going on. They have actually moved out of our county into another county. And I believe they have a crew here trying to do some due diligence to make repairs. Of course, that's kind of tough right now with rain and mud and that type of stuff. We have a few pictures up here, so you can kind of see what we're talking about. They plowed in into ditches and created lots of disturbance. And I know these are kind of hard to see, but you're seeing a lot of that go on. We received calls and now, of course, and are making lists for them to get out. Can you stop, Cole, for a second?
Yep.
Our permit does not allow utilities in the road. They put it in the road. They are making corrections to that. Generally, requirement in the ditch, they're coming through and leaving debris, leaving non-drainable situations. Of course, it's a little early and we're kind of outside the seating, but they're also responsible for all erosion control and all of that. And it's just not happening at this time period. So that's why I suspended the permit until they can get this worked out. And I truly believe they'll get it worked out.
I have a question quick on seeding.
Yeah.
I really resent when they are maybe some out of state contractors and they seed stuff that's not needed.
Yeah, so as part of our permit, we use the Iowa DOT approved permit mix.
Can you enforce that or do they just throw down whatever they want?
They're supposed to be using the Iowa DOT permit. So that being said, as part of our utility permit, they're supposed to have a liaison or a contact person there. They do, but I feel that that person is not doing their diligence for representing Madison County. And our permit has a clause in it that we can charge thirty dollars an hour for an inspector on behalf of us. We have a, we actually have somebody that's very qualified that actually worked for the secondary road department for a few years. And prior to that, I think he had twenty plus years of experience with a local telephone. And I have reached out to him. He's currently at PRN status right now. And when they come back here, I would like to have him do his due diligence, come in and spot check this stuff. We just don't have enough staff to have somebody stand out there. I don't expect him to stand out there every day, but we've got to get control of that before it gets out of control. So I will be bringing that person's resolution to you on the following agenda. He is already PRN established, so I don't think we have a problem. But I want to bring it up to date because last time we did it was 2022, so.
Will he be able to look at everything and advise or just the certain things?
Oh, I think he can look at just about everything.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, we don't design their system for them. That's their deal. But ultimately, they need to be following permit and that road can't look like that when they're done with it.
Now, I'm reporting this back to the DOT, the issues on the.
This is our permit. This is our permit. This is our Madison County utility permit that we give them, yes.
Okay, so you pulled it because they're not, they're noncompliant.
Well, what I mean was reporting the contractor back to the DOT that you're having issues, so they're aware of it.
Yeah, as part of that permitting process where they cross over a state road, yes, yes, let them know. Now, again, we have other contractors. They're doing a good job. This, like most things, is a communication issue. I think once we get that resolved, we'll get it back and it'll all be, all be good. It just takes time and effort away from other things that we need to be working on. And that's kind of how that works.
Are they not required to have flaggers or?
Oh, yeah, as part, yeah, as part of our permit, they're supposed to have that.
They don't.
That's another thing we've had problems with and they've been advised. That's why they have a work stop going on with their permit. All right, so that was relatively.
And work stop means payment stop too.
Well, so we don't pay them. The way I understand, they get paid through their system for how much they put in, in the county. So we've stopped them from putting it in the county. So that probably means they're not going to get paid for that.
That might be a motivator.
That's probably going to be a motivator. Okay, I'm going to jump to, just kind of make sure we stay on track. We have two things on the agenda for temporary closures. And those are the typical maintenance closures. I believe they're listed as, is it I and?
O and M.
Yep, those two. Those are the typical work that we need to close the road to get things fixed.
And your ton, aren't you with?
Yeah, yeah, one of those, I think it still needs to be finished out. Again, it isn't finished until the grass grows back either, so, but the roads are.
And then you want to establish speed limits on.
Yep, and I've got a little presentation of that. I also want to highlight a few things with weed commissioner resolution that's coming. Give you a little background on what's happened there. Okay. So back in December, the current, first of all, first of all, I want to make note that the weed commissioner is a shared, shared spot with secondary roads. And they, I'm trying to think when we did that. It's been several years ago. In order to attract and retain employees, it was a part-time person for several years. And there was a decision made several years ago to share that person so they had full-time status, which it has worked out very well in the past. Our past weed commissioner was very handy and a mechanical fit person. And actually, that's where we used his skills the most. And then he, he no longer wanted to do the weed commissioner and resigned from that and actually came on to the secondary road department as one of our welder, fabricator, hand person. He's there doing that, he's very talented. So what's kind of developed is two thirds of the time, they're working in the road department. Again, in January and February, there's not much noxious weeds growing. So one third of the year is, is important to get out there. And we do have those complaints and those are, you know, as needed or come in. And the other thing that has happened too, and they're able to help the road department manage some of our own noxious weeds that come up. We are responsible for those too. And with, oh, a lot of miles of road, it's hard to see it all, so. That's where we've, we've gone with this position. So after, after the retirement or resign or change, changed jobs, we had an opening in December eighteenth. And we advertised that all the way up to January seventeenth. And we had six applicants, but none had the qualifications. And so let me kind of give you a little background on the qualifications. There's a land sturgeon for noxious weeds that's required. I believe it's agricultural weed control category six, right away is required. We also require a class A commercial driver's license. We also require tanker because the person is carrying liquid. We also require hazmat because sometimes some of that material is, could be hazardous. So there's a lot of requirements just with the general, general weed commissioner as it is. And with that being said, we, we are limited, we have limited employees that have hazmat and tanker. It's a little tougher to get. It's nice to have a backup. As you know, we are, we have our fuel system down here. Well, we transfer fuel, we eat that type of stuff. So if a regular person's sick, he's available to help, help them out. That's a plus to have him here. The other thing is, is we looked at a lot of problems with the roadside. So this job here, weed commissioner, roadside manager, is going to help us with a lot of the roadside things that we currently don't have anybody to take care of. One is, first thing I can think of right off the bat is become very popular with the counties is there's some programs out there to get grants for seed. And in order to do that, you have to have somebody track it, watch it, do that. So I think we're pretty good mechanical wise down at the shop. So this person here, when we advertised it, we were looking for a weed commissioner and kind of roadside manager. This person will foreman, mowing operations, tree clearing. When he's not doing that, he'll help us out with grants. Of course, the paperwork needs to go with the weed commissioner. Since he has his spray license, rely on him to spray our weeds that we have or mechanically take care of them, either or. And then the other thing this candidate here has is a crane operator's license. We currently have two of those. He's one in order to run our crane for our bridge crew. There are times where we need to have our crane. You have to have a license to run a crane. That's not really easy to get. Going forward with this resolution, just to remember that he does have the appropriate license. And we did go through the interview process. Now, kind of what, I'm going to back up to January seventeenth of twenty five. We didn't have those qualifications goes out. So we re-advertised in January twenty-two, went to February. We had three applicants at that time, interviewed a couple of the same thing. Didn't have that depth of qualification that we were looking for. Reposted again in April twenty-two, closed in May. Had two applications that were qualified. The one that I'm recommending for hire today is one of those. The other one reached out to him for a interview and we never, ever heard back from him. So that's where we're at with that. I also want to remind the board that I have code three seventeen-three that requires us to have a weed commissioner by March. Tough to do when people don't want to do this. I would recommend that we go on with this. This person has been with the county and is very talented. He's currently a bridge foreman right now. And I look for him to move into a spot where he can help the weed commissioner position, help manage, possibly in the future, we will see a roadside department. I know a lot of the counties that are growing, ours is one of them, that have a roadside manager department and take care of a lot of those types of things. All right, I've rambled on way too much on that. Any questions?
Yes. When we have weed complaints, I think it's important that this new person reaches out to the NRCS and the FSA because some of these fields of high complaint are CRP fields. And they're getting paid for that and that's really their jurisdiction.
Yeah, I, I'm not an expert and I've heard Javson County Attorney Diane on that, but I think that's part of the process that's outlined in the code for that. Again, I'm not an expert in that. My role here is kind of being manager of him. He's got the licenses for that, I don't. But yeah, good point, good point.
Yeah, I think make them do their jobs. And what about, will we ever entertain controlled burns of some of these ditches? Does any natives come back off?
You know, and that, that's a very good question. And I think that's probably where maybe the future goes as we, as we maybe expand. Again, it's, we have to have the dollars for all that. If you look around to the other counties that are growing, they have those type of, they have a roadside manager and they do that type of stuff. I think it's something at least to get started, at least to get some grant money for some seed. Every little bit helps. I know a lot of counties are on board right now with that. The main thing is with that grant money is we have to document everything. So let's say we get five thousand dollars worth of seed. It's planted here, here, and here, and here. They'll come back and do an audit, it's growing, that person has to report on it. And as of right now, I don't, the road department doesn't have anybody in that function to do that. It's just a choice. Anything else? Told you guys need to pack lunch. Matt's just warm. All right, here we go. All right, let's, let's talk about, can we go to the bridge load limits, Cole?
Yep.
Okay. So this comes to the board periodically. As our bridges age and we see structural problems with them, we get a resolution to post tonnages. I have two bridges here that are post-tonnages. What Cole's got up there is if you go to our road notification system and you're wondering what those little I iconic messages are up there, the I information, if you click on those, that's going to tell you what bridge it is and what posting it is. So that's a three plaque of the post. Should have brought an example, I apologize. It's twenty-eight, forty, forty. So that's, that's what that means. If you are in trucking industry, I highly recommend if you're going to travel on the secondary road systems, to get to that map. We have a link to that map on our website. I think there's a link to this map also through Iowa five-one-one. So we've got two that we had to add, Cole, one of them's up on the Cummings Road. Yeah, it's still relatively high tonnage. Remember, forty tons legal. Twenty-eight would be a straight truck, doesn't matter how many axles there are. The next forty over would be semi and the next forty after that would be a dual trailer semi. So that's how they're listed. And if there's just one posting, that just means that's all that bridge can take. So you've probably heard me talk about this until, and I probably always will. Bridges cost a lot of money. As you can see, we've got a lot of those dots up there. I hate to have to continue to bring this list, but we have to mark those and you'll just kind of see it how the tonnages go down until we get, get something either repaired or replaced.
You had a three-ton bridge.
Yeah, a three.
You had a three-ton, I think it's sitting.
Oh, yeah, there's a couple of three-ton's on here.
What can go over a three-ton?
A car.
That's it?
Uh, maybe a half-ton pickup that's not four-wheel drive and extended. But you start to get to the larger SUVs, you might be pushing it. Yep.
Are most of our bridges over, we have a lot of rivers and creeks.
A lot of rivers and creeks.
Oh, that's okay.
Madison County's pretty unique, tangent, you know, I'll make this short. We have a lot of bridges that are over smaller waterways, more hills versus like, in some of the other counties, they have maybe bigger, bigger waterways, but maybe not as many bridges. But I will, I will have to say though, if you compare, the one thing that they do for funding is compare square footage of like deck. We're pretty typical for the size of county that we have. Even though we have a lot of bridges, but if you take like the square footage, you know, we might have bridges that are fifty foot. And some counties have bridges that are five hundred foot long, so this is kind of. All right, so you might see somebody ask why I signed one up, that's where that's there. Okay, next. Can we go to the, yeah, all right. Okay, well, this has been an interesting subject for about two and a half years. There's been a vendor located on this route that sells aggregate. And there has been a lot of growth, uh, growth expansion and especially around the metro area. And it's good that this person is very busy. However, it's created some interest and dynamics on this roadway. So I'm going to go through this here. Okay, so we're going to review it. The I DNR notification for fugitive dust, Iowa administrative code, believe it or not, has a term called fugitive dust. And everybody's responsible for fugitive dust. Ag is exempt. We are, Madison County Road Department is exempt for our own processes. However, the law, administrative code does say that the road department is responsible for the dust traveling on the road. So when it boils down to it, we're responsible for dust. Residents along the route have made concerns to our office, sheriff's office, and I believe they've reached out to the board supervisors maybe a few times over the years. The residents are requesting dust control and speed limits. Dust is making it hard to see, traffic traveling at a high rate of speed. Next. There's where it's at. Basically runs from St. Charles Road all the way over to what I call Little Highway, eighty-seventy-one. And actually, there's a little segment that goes over to one sixty-nine too that I got chopped off. That's what we're talking about? Okay. Cole, you're doing a fantastic job. You read my mind, next slide. All right, items reviewed, traffic count, existing road geometrics, existing traffic signs, speed management, traffic speed studies, site distance, crash history, fugitive impact dust predictor, Madison County dust control policy. Traffic count is done by the Iowa Department of Transportation, it's on a four-year cycle. I think I've referenced this several times. Two sixteen was the last time we were counted. We had a COVID year, so it didn't get counted in twenty-twenty. They did do the twenty-twenty-four traffic count. It is published, however, I believe I was told last week it's supposed to come out here in the next week or so. So at two thousand and sixteen, this route was ninety to two hundred and forty vehicles a day. And then as I did a count here last year, because we had a, an intern. It takes a long time to sit there and count stuff. So we went out, we did a spot study. We, in that route over the top, we saw one thirty-two to three hundred and fifty vehicles a day. The big number there is thirty-two percent trucks. Most of our roads are somewhere between five and ten percent trucks. So kind of an increase in trucks. We looked at existing road geometry. So that's the hills, curves, those type of things. Road is graded forty-one, forty-eight, nineteen sixty-five. It needs current design guide standards. So what I mean, the, the road, the vertical and horizontal curves do. I would have to say that the right of way is very limited out there in the situations. And if we were going to redo a road today, the ditches would be a lot wider with proper drainage. But we'll get to that in a few more years, maybe. We looked at all the existing traffic signs. Signs aren't just plunked up just because you need one. There is a uniform traffic control device. It's got out by Federal Highway. We follow that to the T, okay? You have to follow that. If you don't follow that, it opens the county up for liability. So those are all in place, they're out there. Speed management, speed limits are only meaningful if, well, basically, if people don't speed. It's reasonable conditions and the speed limit meets the driver's expectations. Studies show that lowering the speed limit without justification does not effectively reduce the speed of vehicles. I have code. All our roads are fifty-five or fifty at night and less posted. And then the other speed limits may be determined on the basis of engineering and traffic investigation. And that's kind of what we're doing with this giant report right here. It's not a good idea and I know that's the very first people, I get it all the time. I want a speed sign, I want a speed sign. It just, it doesn't work that way. You can actually create more accidents by varying the speed. You really need to have an engineering and traffic investigation. And that's what we have done here, come up with some data. I don't, and I'll kind of give you an example. Everybody's been traveling down the interstate, right? And you're doing seventy because everybody else is doing seventy. You're doing seventy-six because everybody's doing seventy-six. And then there's that person driving sixty. What happens? Well, if you set speed limit signs that are unexpected out in the country, and remember, most people are traveling at that forty-five, fifty mile an hour type speed and you plunk something up at twenty and there's, we got one person driving twenty and the other driving fifty-five, the reaction time to stop causes more problems. So that's why you need to do an engineering step. So that's why you need to do a, a, a engineering step. Okay, I'm getting off track here, so possible justification resulted analyst. Free-flow speed, that's exactly what I was talking about. Stopping site distance, uh, road geometric speed. Kind of topped on that. Crash history, traffic control, which would be signs, adjacent land use, enforcement issues. Next, please. So we went out, we visited, we did actually a spot speed, speed study. We checked speed, traffic types, vehicles, how fast they were going, which direction. More information than you can imagine. And we set up kind of in the middle of this because I felt that was pretty typical of what's going on. And this is what we come up with. So the free-flow speed study, eighty-five percent of the traveling public, or eighty-five percentile, is fifty-one point three. That means everybody that drove on it, eighty-fifth percentile is fifty-one point three.
And the speed limit is fifty, correct?
Fifty-five at the day, fifty at night. So right off the bat, right there, you meet the minimum requirements of, of it. It wouldn't require posting because eighty-fifth percentile is under the speed limit. So it'd be no different if you went out on one-sixty-nine or any other, other, other street and did a traffic, as long as your eighty-five percentile is under that, then you're, you're good. Uh, review of the fifty percent. So it's average. Average is traveling at forty-three miles an hour. Uh, should say, average speed fifty-five is forty-four. So that's basically what most of that. Uh, we had ten percent of the vehicles exceeding fifty-five miles an hour, which is, that's tough to do on that road, but they were doing it. And thirty-eight percent of vehicles were forty-five-ish. And again, percent of trucks, percent of trucks, uh, large number of trucks.
Were they gravel trucks or bellynote, correct?
Uh, you know, when we counted trucks, we counted. The majority of them were transporting aggregate.
Sure.
Okay? But there are a few delivery trucks that were in that count. But the majority was an aggregate delivery system. So, uh, site distance, uh, we looked at that out there. And, uh, it basically meets our, our standards for that. To get an idea of what site distance is, it's, it's items out there that could cause, you know, a blind intersection or blind sight, those type of things. Uh, we looked at the crash history. It really hasn't been that many crashes out there over a ten-year period of time. You know, pretty typical, uh, things that happen out in our rock roads. A lot of animal went back, so there's only one there. Uh, a lot of times you're swerving or making action is for animals. So. All right, here's the big one. Okay. Now we're talking about fugitive dust impact. So over the last two and a half years, once the Iowa Department of Natural Resources finds out about this, then they're lucky enough to give this office a call and have a nice conversation about, hey, what are you going to do with this? And I, I always go, well, and they, they're very understanding people. Uh, they don't like to make that contact call either, but that's the code that we're in, we're dealing with. And what they're enforcing is Iowa Code six-fifty-seven nuisance. Um, you can't make nuisances to your neighbors. I won't go into the definition of that, but, um, there, this is quote right from the public highway authority, shall be responsible for taking corrective actions. In those cases where said authority has received complaints or has knowledge of dust conditions that require abatement pursuant to the sub-rule, which is six-fifty-one, six-fifty-seven. Reasonable precautions may include, but not limited to, the following procedures. And these are listed right out of the administrative code. So here's where practical, water, chemicals, or control of dust. Well, when we get the rain that comes naturally, that's great. Um, you'll see here, dust control costs to the county, it's not, we, we, we can't afford that. Uh, applying a different type of material. Uh, we're not going to be able to put asphalt paving down. This is not going to happen. Uh, control equipment. There's no way that we can put up control equipment along the roadway to control this. This is not practical. Uh, we can't remove the, or pave the streets. But right from the administrative code, it does reduce the speed of vehicles traveling over surfaces as necessary to minimize the generation of airborne dust. So, next please. Uh, the D N R provides this spreadsheet to help us predict that. Kind of what it looks like. Next, please. The Impact Fugitive Dust Predictor Tool. That's what we're looking at there. The predictor tool is used to determine the traffic. Uh, is considered more than just ordinary traffic. Now, I have to get, I have to talk a little bit about ordinary traffic. And I hope everybody didn't pass their lunch. Don't mean to go on there, but this is, this is an important thing. Um, everybody's going to say I've got more ordinary traffic. So I'm going to bring up a land, I'm going to, I'm going to do, use a parallel here. Uh, parallels, something like that. I butchered that. Um, and try to, try to, uh, explain it in regards to legal principles with property boundaries and a river. This is good. If, if Cole and I own property along the river, okay? And let's say it's middle river out there. And, uh, over time, the river moves, okay? The boundary moves because we both see that, okay? Uh, we see what's going on. But if we get, you know, fourteen inches of rain in an hour and a half, and it closes the channel out, and the river goes over on his property, and I get land, well, that's, that's not ordinary. The land, the land doesn't change. The, the boundary doesn't change. This kind of applies to this. I mean, if you think about ordinary is, yeah, I can say in two thousand and sixteen, I had ninety vehicles a day. And here we are in twenty-twenty-five, and I got two-hundred-and-twenty. Is that normal? Is it ordinary? So you have to keep that in mind. It's processed. And remember when I went back and we did a traffic, traffic study, and we said thirty-two percent trucks. Typically, it's five. A little investigating with the vendors, the people who are buying this. I know there's a large contract for the vendor to sell a lot of material over the next three years or so, three, four years. I think once that's done, more likely it'll come back to what we call ordinary. So keep that in mind. So, come, come back up. Sorry. So, uh, hard things. Uh, vehicles per day, the generating ordinary. I, I feel it after being out there and studying it, it's an additional ninety vehicles a day that are on there. Good number to work with. Uh, we tried two speeds, thirty-five and forty-five. Uh, and we have to pick off a, a number of feet from the road. So we said eighty feet, that's one of the minimal ones. Uh, and then the percent of silt in the road. Well, believe it or not, the six-point-four is what they recommend as a starting point. And if you look at our variations on our material, it's real close to that. So good number. Uh, meteorological data comes from, uh, PDSM. That's the way the D N R does. And so we ran forty-five miles an hour, and we would not be compliant for forty-five miles an hour. Or a little over. Then we ran thirty-five miles an hour. It's an acceptable limit. Uh, and again, this is a predictor tool. Something that the D N R helps us with. So that's kind of where I'm saying, hey, maybe we need to be thinking about thirty-five miles an hour until ordinary traffic is, is maybe reestablished. Uh, this isn't new to Madison County. Believe it or not, it was here. Uh, we had same, similar process in another vendor, and those are set at forty-five. Uh, the houses are a little farther away from the road there and that determined that back in those, that time period. Uh, and those cores are still pretty activated and it's still current today. Next, please. Uh, we do have a dust control policy, um, that's, that's, that's available to all residents. Uh, they're, they're permitted to put down a, a product. They need to get the vendor to do that. Uh, the cost is, is borne by the resident, though. I'm not going to go through every word on this one. It starts in June, which I believe is going to start next week. We'll start prepping the roads for that and end in October. We also will work with residents if something comes up. Currently, there's three-hundred-and-seventy-five of these spots right now. Takes this a little while to get up, out, all those spots, get it loaded up. That's kind of give you an idea of where that's at. Next, please. Currently, on our system, I don't know if everybody's going to have that, but there are fourteen residents along this route that, that put dust control down. Next, please. Uh, there are fifty-two residents along that route that would need dust control. And I just did a quick estimate at four hundred feet in front of everybody's house, more or less. So you're talking, took, looking at about twenty grand. That's for one application. And due to the multiple traffic that's passed to travel on that road, it's going to take more than one application to get that done. It's, it's nearly impossible for us to do that. If we would do that, so now three or four times a year, we're spending a hundred thousand dollars on dust control. It's temporary, and, uh, we would have to take it from other, other spots.
But the price has increased.
All right.
A lot.
Yep.
So it's twenty thousand to do dust control on the entire route?
Tire route for fifty-three residents once.
Because last year, White Corporation, when I begged them, they did it. Cost, they did it in front of every house out there. It cost them all fourteen thousand dollars for one time.
And I think I got, I'll bring that up. Uh, traffic count overall, we think somewhere around one-thirty-two to three-hundred-and-fifty. Uh, we think there's ninety more. Talk about, uh, ninety more over ordinary meets standards. Uh, signs meet standards. Uh, I don't really think we have what we call a speeding condition out there where somebody would need signs. Stopping, stopping site distance is good. We don't have a lot of crap, crashes. Uh, the fugitive dust impact can be reduced by lowering the speed. Uh, again, Madison County dust control policy allows residents to apply for their cost. All right. Options considered. Do nothing. I don't think do nothing is a good idea. Uh, post-speed limit to thirty-five miles an hour. Uh, enforcement, you know, I don't want to overtax our other departments, but, and their funding, but that's questionable. Again, dust control, cost of one application for the whole route is, you know, around twenty grand. Funding, pretty hard to get that. Work with vendors. Um, I have made phone calls out there. Last year, I made phone calls. We had one of the, uh, vendors, uh, that were purchasing, making one-time, uh, dust control application out there. However, it didn't go on, we started this process about this time, and it didn't go on until October. But they said they'd never do it again. I've had conversation with the quarry. And again, this is an open road, but they always suggest to the people that are delivering aggregates to stagger the trucks. Uh, talk about a different way in and out of the place. Uh, shorter, you shorter, shorter routes. Um, sometime that's, that discussion is, has been ongoing for basically two years. They try, but again, it's open, public road, and if a company wants to drive that on it, they can drive on it. There is no laws for the secondary road systems to restrict weight for this purpose. Right? Seen an embargo that happens in the spring, the best weather conditions. Uh, there's no restrictive weight over legal loads for the secondary road system. Cities have a little different mechanism, but they can do something. Now we get down to this part. Oh, boy. Uh, I would recommend that we post a speed limit to thirty-five miles an hour. Continue to work with the vendors, uh, stagger truck distances. Discuss the placement of disk, of dust control still. I don't, I don't think, I think that would be highly unlikely. Uh, maybe talk them into a different route. Uh, continue to work with residents that want to place dust at their cost. If, if we're outside the window of this dust placement thing, and somebody wants it, we'll work with them to get it down. There's still a lot to pay for it, but we'll work with them. The next thing I think going forward is, and I've already talked to Ryan about this, and actually the academy attorney, too. As we go forward, uh, we need to update our local sor- ordinances to develop mitigation plans for when these type of things, um, happen. Again, you know, the, the vendor's been there, or that vendor's product's been there for, since nineteen-seventy-four. Things have changed. And I think as we go forward in the future, it'd be nice for the county to be able to have some sort of mitigation plan to help with this, help with the residents, help with what happens in the road system. And again, remove, uh, posted speed limit signs once ordinary traffic has been reestablished. I don't think they need to be out there until, you know, forever. That's my recommendation on that. Thank you. I hope I didn't take up way too much of your time, but I did. But I thought it was, uh, I'm doing my due diligence by representing the department and talk to you about these issues.
So in all reality, they're not going to stay with trucks because that's time and money.
Yep.
Okay. Um, they aren't going to take alternative routes because it's the shortest route, time and money. They get paid by the load. There are seven of, when they do leave that quarry, there are seven of them as close as you and me coming up. It is terrible. How many tickets will it take to hit the coffee shops if they do drive the speed limit? That's a sheriff.
You asking me?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't hang out with them. I don't know what they're thinking.
If we, we reduce it to thirty-five, and they're going fifty-five, that's a much significant, that's a significant ticket that they go with their license.
Oh, yeah. Also, remember, if we do not do anything in a progressive manner, we are not following the Iowa Administrative Code, too.
Now, when I sit out there, because my nephew lives there, really in reality, Jason can help me here. The truckers were not speeding, but what they do is run stop signs.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to go into great detail, but the majority of the trucks were traveling, you know, that forty-four-ish.
So they weren't speeding?
No. No, actually, you know, very few people were actually speeding out there. I can take you back to the data, but the problem is, is generating the dust.
Like so many.
It, it, if there was no dust out there and somebody asked me to do this, nope, the answer, the answer from an engineering standpoint on traffic analysis is no, that doesn't need speed limits. The answer to meet Iowa Administrative Code, so, is, yeah, we're going to have to do something about it.
So the resolution out here?
If you look, if that data you showed us earlier was from a previous study, right?
Not, yes, I actually did that.
So we do a new study, and you get the same numbers. Nobody's, nobody's speeding, there's no accidents, nothing like that. Does that justify us just lowering the speed limit because somebody doesn't like dust? Do you have to have more than just, I don't like dust? Um, is what I'm asking.
The, the key to this thing is it's beyond ordinary. That's personal. Doesn't matter even if it's on a paved system. I would recommend, if we, if I went out there today, did another engineering study, take week and a half of solid time, it's going to come up about the same numbers. The key is, it's the dust that's being generated. And that is, doesn't have anything to do with an engineering study or the traffic or whatever. It has to do with meeting the requirements of the administrative code and the nuisance law. And unfortunately, our administrative code throws that back on the secondary road department. And
So the mere factors dust, that justifies any action?
Yep, that justifies the action. However, it has to be over ordinary. So let's say I live on a road, and I've lived there for ten years. And over ten years, it went from a hundred vehicles to three-hundred vehicles a day. That's, that's ordinary. I mean, the key, the key to this is, is there's thirty-two percent more trucks traveling on that for a period of time, so that vendor can sell his product. Right? And, and that's, that's what it is.
So that's not ordinary, and since the D N R's been notified, if we do nothing, they could force us to put calcium chloride down for fugitive dust?
Yes, they could force us into violation of the nuisance law. The county would be liable.
So lowering the speed limit, we've shown in good
We're trying to do our due diligent, due diligence in, right from their number six item, what we can afford to do. And we also will work with residents to put dust control down. And you can say, well, I've got to pay for it. Well, let's say we did, let's say we did do that. Then our options are, because it, it's going to take about a hundred thousand dollars a season to do this because we can't just put it down once. What's going to happen is we'll have to cut maybe rock, rock from the budget. Okay? So, or, or we have to raise our taxes to pay for it. So it's a lose-lose deal no matter what. You could even go back and say, that's why we've got to be careful with the, when you think through zoning issues and people in futures. You know, you could say, oh, the quarry needs to be taxed for it, all that. Well, guess what? Madison County uses the rock out of the quarry. So we're going to pay for it no matter what. I guess what I'm recommending that we do this because this is the least cost at this time. I do not like to throw more work on your department. You, you have limited resources just like the rest of us, but this is kind of the situation we've been thrown in.
And that's why it's on the agenda?
That's why I'm up here talking for forty-five minutes. All right, thank you very much for your time. Again, uh, you can reach out to me on my own, same way with anybody here. I'll be around the hall for just a little bit. If somebody wants to ask a question, well, you can make an appointment at the office. You know, I can, I'll go over this stuff. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. All right, next on the agenda is public hearing for Madison County Budget Amendment. Can I have roll call vote to, uh, do I have a motion to enter public hearing?
Some.
You got a second?
Second.
Uh, can I have a roll call vote?
Two bicep hops. Yeah, two bicep samples, two bicep bench.
All right, we are entering the public hearing for the Madison County Budget Amendment. This is for fiscal year twenty-five, ending June thirtieth. This will be the final amendment for the current budget year we are in right now. So I will open the forum. Is there anyone on the, from the auditor's office on the phone? All right, we are entered into the public hearing, uh, for the Madison County Budget Amendment. Just so the public knows, we put the word out to all the department heads requesting if they need to make any changes to the current budget, um, to submit those to the auditor's office. And that is submitted. So, anybody want to speak to that?
I just have any questions? What is your amendment? One, two, three.
Okay, so current amendment has, this is for, we had, we had six different things submitted for a budget amendment. The first one was for emergency management, um, additional off supplies, uh, G M, G P M T payment, building repair and a full-time salary, uh, adjustment that was, um, increased the budget by six, sixty thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars. Um, next one was environmental health department, uh, increased fuel, postage, legal services. There was vehicle repairs, some education and increased sewer water lab testing. I know we're doing more of those. Zoning, um, increase, uh, that, that increase, by the way, was three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Zoning had an increase of two thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars for postage, education and health insurance. Uh, secondary road, um, there was a decrease of two thousand two hundred fifty dollars for the health re- insurance reimbursement. That was offset, um, by a different area, which we'll get to in a minute. Recorder's office had an increase of fifteen thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars for health insurance. And then the last one was roadway construction and capital project construction. Uh, one was sixty-four thousand seven hundred one dollars. That was for the nature center project. Uh, and hopefully we'll get this reimbursed by donations.
Correctors?
Yes. Um, and then roadway construction of two thousand five hundred, uh, two thousand two hundred fifty dollars. And that was also for the health insurance reimbursement. So for the total, uh, fund, our current fund decrease of a hundred forty-six thousand six hundred sixty dollars. There was, normally out here, we usually see revenues, um, because we haven't, we're having some trouble balancing for revenues. That is not on here, so we're not comfortable, uh, putting that on here because we want to make sure the numbers were accurate. So right now, it's just the changes in expenditures for this budget amendment. Uh, Iowa code only requires that amendments be done for expenditures. So, just so you know that, we're compliant with Iowa code. So do you have any questions, Bill?
No, thanks for clarifying. Any questions, Bill?
Okay. All right, um, any members of the public that wish to comment? Anyone on the phone wish to comment? If not, can you please mute your phone? We're hearing a lot of background noise. All right, well then, I will entertain a motion to exit out of the public hearing for the budget amendment.
Some.
Second.
All right, uh, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are out of the public hearing at ten twenty-five. Next one up is public comment. Um, this is the time for the public to address the board. You have three minutes to speak. We'll go ahead and, uh, take public comment from here on site. And then if there's anyone on the phone, um, you can comment after we're done there. Make sure you unmute your phone and speak to the area. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Great, if you would come up, give your name and town and you have three minutes.
Good morning. Um, my name is Dr. Jennifer Jolly. I'm actually a licensed mental health counselor here in Werset. Um, that does matter. So on May sixth, um, I was out for a walk, I was working. I was out for a walk and I noticed an elderly woman sitting in her yard, covered in blood. And so I got my own lunch. I later learned and I, I did speak with, her name's Ms. Claudette Manning. Um, I did reach out to Mr. Steve and Ms. Pam. And they gave me permission to say her name and also say somebody's dust. And I will respect that. What I will share though, what I learned later on was that Ms. Claudette was one of the, um, the, um, individuals who was impacted by the elderly care that was no longer provided. Within three weeks, um, she died. And so why that matters is this beautiful young soul sat outside. Um, I happened to find her, helped her, say a prayer for her, was blessed by Mr. McDonald and ambulance crew. It would contact her family and ultimately she passed at six oh one P M. The reason why I chose to speak today was because this is impacting more than just the elderly community, impacts community members in general. And I think it needs to be heard that all life matters, all age matters, all human beings matter. And as a community, I think that's, um, I'm not very well informed. I will own that as far as the plans that led to the vote to decrease the funding. What I will say though is, um, one life is one too many in this, um, in the way that it occurred was unfortunate for any human being to ever have to endure. Thank you for your time.
What was your name, ma'am?
Dr. Jennifer Jolly.
Jolly? Jennifer runs turning point. Second. What was the name of the individual discussing? Mrs. Claudette, Ms. Claudette?
Ms. Claudette Manning.
Manning? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? All right. Anyone on the phone wish to speak? Okay, uh, we will go ahead and close public comment then. Moving on to presentations, Ryan Marcourt.
On Michael, on, on, sorry. On Tuesday, May twelfth, on your minutes, it's C C O G, not C C O G. It's on the eleven page one. Just need to kind of eat that crap.
Oh.
Yeah.
Is it, it's just?
It's S I C O G.
All right. Ryan here? Is he anywhere?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if he comes in, we can, we can have him jump in. So, all right, we'll go ahead and move on to resolutions for board consideration. Um, the first one is approving updates to bank authorization. This is to, uh, remove Emily and add more to that, uh, for the banks. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second, but I just want a clarification on this. Um, going forward?
Yes.
We need to be more timely about this when, uh, employees leave, correct?
Yeah.
So how can we all work together to do that? Is that something I can help with or how do we just ensure that we don't have a lag?
When you have a smooth transition in offices, it usually works itself out.
And then it goes on the very next board meeting.
Correct. So we can all work together to try to make sure we make it more timely.
Okay.
And when you write approving updates to bank authorization, would you write maybe more on what it is referring to? Describe that.
Call it, Jennifer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So any other discussion?
No.
All right, do, uh, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next one is approving future monthly HSA contributions to be paid and reviewed during the claims process. Um, this was put on here because, um, I spoke to, uh, True North and they said that we don't necessarily need resolutions to do this because we already approved our, the renewal. Um, so this was actually creating duplicate work for the auditor's office. Um, but for clarity, it was decided just to do a resolution going forward. Because we did this back in twenty thirteen when we moved, we did the same thing for Walmart payments. So for consistency, we just had it on there. So eliminated some extra work for the auditor's office. So, um, do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any con- any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, this one, the next one is approving wage adjustment from twenty-eight dollars per hour to twenty-five per hour for M. Simpson, Elections Deputy. Um, due to, uh, she's off her probationary period effective eighteenth of May. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in, any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, approving wage increase for B. Foreman, EMS director of two and a half percent, um, to eighty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars, uh, per year effective July one. This was, um, what we approved as part of our budget for fiscal year twenty-six. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approving wage changes in the ambulance department effective July one, twenty twenty-five. This is for fiscal, our fiscal year budget, um, uh, twenty, twenty-six that we approved. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would like, Brady, you are still by surrounding counties considerably lower, is that?
Yeah, but we're, we're, we're getting close. One of our E M Ts just, uh, gone down to Preston and they s- bring new E M T. They started him at eighteen something. So we're starting him at sixteen, which we're getting closer.
Getting there.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting there. So it's, it's looking a little more, we, we have gotten a few applications in, so I think they, the word's out that we're upping, yeah, July first, so.
Good.
That's, I hope that's helping.
Thank you, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, motion carries. Uh, approving, uh, fund transfer of four thousand three hundred fifty dollars for the May monthly HSA contribution. Um, I know we just passed it here, but we put it on, this is going to be the last one we see going forward. So do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, approving Paul D. Welch and Joan F. Naylor to Veterans Affairs Commission. Um, they are currently serving on there and express desire to continue to serve. So, um, uh, we, I recommend that we reappoint them to the Veterans Affairs Commission. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, the next one is approving withdrawal from the C I C S twenty-eighty agreement effective January one, twenty twenty-five. We discussed this last week and this consensus of the board was to make it effective July, uh, sorry, January one of twenty twenty-five instead of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, this is because they no longer, they did not get the bid, they have, they have no choice. So we'll stay on the twenty-eighty agreement through the finalization of all the paperwork, basically, which is December thirty-first. So I will entertain a motion to approve, uh, withdrawal from the C I C S twenty-eighty agreement effective January one, twenty twenty-five.
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, actually, it should be twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
My apologies.
I just saw that right when you were saying.
Twenty twenty-six. So we can correct that if you will. All right, so with the correction, uh, we move on January one, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a motion, uh, do you have a first and a second, Brady?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all.
With the correction.
With the correction. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next one is approving, uh, the third and final budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Um, do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, uh, motion, uh, I'll say aye, motion carries. Um, the next one is approving the hire of, uh, Jay Fitch as we, we commissioner, roadside manager at thirty-three twenty-five an hour effective twenty-seventh May, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Do I have a second? I will second that. Uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please vote aye.
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 And I recuse myself and abstain from voting because he's my nephew.
All right, motion, uh, motion passes. All right, moving on to approving establishment of bridge load limits. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Um, I would like the board to consider approval of, um, the next two together. They're both road closures. I will entertain a motion to, uh, approve, um, S R five twenty-seven twenty-five C and D together.
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, all right, any discussion?
And they're done except really for seating, aren't they, mostly done?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Last resolution is approving establishment of speed limits and signs along G fifty-three. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, uh, applications, we're moving on to applications for licenses, permits and cancellations. We have an application for a temporarily cordoned lawn license for the traveling Nova, L L C sixteen forty, U S one sixty-nine in Werset and, um, June seventh of twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, we are now on to board reports. Um, Diane, did you want to go first?
Sure. I had heard a, an insurance meeting, um, special meeting, landfill meeting, another special meeting. I had assessors board, aging resources. Aging resources is all kind of depending on the trickle down of what's happening in Washington. It, it just seems like, um, all these cuts, it doesn't seem to affect the really large cities because they have the resources, but it is affecting rural and smaller communities. Um, I did have North Yale River watershed meeting. And then I can wait till I renew business. That's all meetings I've attended.
Jess?
So I've been meeting with some of the department heads and I'll continue to work through, um, so I can have an opportunity to learn about what each group does and, um, about what some of their struggles might be and, and in ways I can help. Did have a meeting with, uh, Board Health and V A Veterans Affairs regarding office relocation. Uh, working through some of those items. I think we should probably have a, a work session, um, in the future to talk through that. I'll continue to, to get through.
Talk through.
Just talk through that process. I don't want to lay that out, yeah. And so my intention is to kind of develop somewhat of a, a rough timeline. Um, it's subject to change at worst, but just starting to get this all laid out and what this looks like. There was an emergency management, um, committee meeting. Uh, we all approved, um, an additional salary increase for Mitch, uh, which was part uh, which was part of the original negotiation with his hiring. He has met 14 out of 16 baseline courses that he's already achieved. Um, so he's well ahead of schedule with that until he's doing a good job.
Does that require a budget update?
Uh, no, he said it's already covered.
We did it, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was, yeah, it was factored in. Yep. Um, I do want, let me see here. We have coming up on new business, I think we're gonna be talking about alternative bridge options, so. So for now, that's all I have for now.
Any other discussion? Okay, so, um, I was in the same special meetings and work sessions you all were in. Uh, we had a Masson County Development Group meeting, I attended an MPO meeting. I also had a meeting, um, with, with our Workmen's Comp Insurance, with our insurance agent, John. We're gonna probably have to do a budget amendment for that for fiscal year 26 due to the increase, um, the unexpected increase, so we could probably have to have a little bit more discussion on that, either a work session or, um, to talk through that. Have a safety committee, create a safety committee. Well, we have a safety committee, it just hasn't been meeting, but we're gonna have to be a little bit more diligent on that.
You're going to have to be diligent.
Yeah. Who's on the safety committee now and why haven't they been meeting? Do we know? Usually that, um, that could have been a transition communication, but usually that's headed up by emergency management and.
HR.
And HR. And they were meeting quarterly. Um, and I think you were on that one, but we were waiting for it to be set up. So I think that, I think going forward, because I think the last one met, that's when I was on it, was in November, I don't, I don't recall. So we'll have to be, uh, get on board on that, make sure we're meeting regularly and we can talk through that with John.
Yeah.
To help us assist, help assist us on, on what we need to do and that kind of stuff, potentially.
Yeah, I was under the impression it'd been a few years.
No.
No. It was, it used to be very active and even had money and they would buy things that made things safer. And it just sort of, you know, after, you know, left, I don't know, just in that transition, it was nothing that long. It was usually DL and HR and they did meet regularly and they did do things. Um, they would reach out to department heads and say, um, because I want, we wanted a bell in your, in your building so you could hear when people came in and out, we did that. Uh, same with public health, you could walk in there and never hear a word, so we changed that. So that's the kind of stuff they did.
Um, I think that because we had such an increase in workman, workmen's comp claims, the purpose of that is to mitigate any future increases by showing that we're working on safety. And, uh, I know John and I talked about some ideas to do that, um, pulling from private sector experience. So probably need something that we'll discuss and maybe engage in meeting on as well, um, to make sure that we're on the same page and we're not making requirements that are not, are, are, that are understandable and doable.
You know, HR, there is, um, there used to be classes online that we could take for free and you might look into that and, and.
I brought that up to John.
A lot of safety issues. I used to take a lot of them and now I can't find them, but we need to look back into that. And then when they have a few minutes, they're just, and then you print out your certificate and save it and those might be beneficial for us too.
Absolutely. Okay, so we can, we can discuss that, uh, maybe have a work session in the future to discuss that. And how, uh, some ideas floating around and, and John will rope you into that too. So, okay, um, so that's it for my reports, moving on to old business. The old business, you have anything to discuss?
I do, you requested me, I would get more, um, bids on the appraisal for the public health building. My first appraisal was I talked to the banks and local CPAs and who use them and they said Raleigh, which is $2,000. Then I reached out to Commercial Appraisers of Iowa and they were $4,200 and Nelson Appraisal in Urbendale was 29. So Raleigh is by far the least expensive. And then, um, old business, Chip has been, having just been gone for bids, so I helped Chip with getting estimates on the doors. He got $5,30601 from Reed. I reached out to Adams Doors, they came here, they should have the estimate this week. Two others, I reached out twice, they've not called me back, so Chip and I said, we're done. If they don't call you back, it's an indication, I'm just not gonna deal with them.
So hopefully we'll get one more bid, one other bid.
Yeah, Adams, we're waiting on Adams Doors.
Cause I know, um, they, they put the new push bar, little push things. So that mitigated the issue with the hole.
Yes.
I was not aware that that's been left since November.
Steve asked, well, I didn't know it until somebody told me and then I had Steve go over that day and fix that.
Yeah.
Right now, because, um, no one had mentioned it.
No.
So then after I found out, I had Steve fix it within the hour. Yeah, I don't know why that leaves.
I don't understand that. We can have future discussions on that. Okay, um, anything else? Old business, any old business, Jess? Okay. New business?
Wait, I'm sorry, old business. We had talked about moving the order of our meetings to have public comment.
After presentation first. Okay.
She can just switch that around on the agenda.
Well, I think we have to do a resolution to update our board policy.
I thought we already did that.
That's where I was, I was trying to get my mind around.
We talked about it, I don't know if we ever did a resolution for it.
I don't think we did.
Alright, we'll just have Karen to arrest this.
So can we go, yeah, for the next meeting, uh, to pass a resolution for that?
And you want that before public comment, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, alright, so the next thing is new business, uh, replacement of doors and annex. I think that you, um, talked about that already. Um, so, once we get that bid in, I think we'll just, we should move forward on making a decision on, on those doors. They're gonna come out of lost funds, so, um, I'd like to get those replaced sooner rather than later.
So Diane, can you send us those, uh, email and then we can maybe potentially.
Get it on the agenda for next meeting. Or we could also have a special meeting to get that approved so we can move forward. Because I think Chip said it's several weeks out or is it several weeks out?
So first one you got, I think it was 12, 14 weeks.
So I, if the board is okay with that.
Well, he's getting another estimate too.
A third one?
Yeah.
Oh.
We both are, we're working on getting as many as we can.
Okay. So I think that once we get that, once you get those two other bids, if you can just, you or Chip can send an email of all three bids to the board. And then I would like, if you guys are okay with that, have a special meeting and approve one so we can get, move forward. Unless, you know, if we don't get it until the next.
We could get it on the meeting if we, regular if we can.
Yeah, I want it on the, I mean, I prefer regular, but I, you know, if we can get it, make a decision before that. Cause our next one is June 10th. So if we could get something, you know, maybe yet this week, we can also have a special meeting to approve that so we can move forward.
See if his estimates come in and mine come in.
Yeah.
We'll get it to you soon as we get them.
Okay. Um, the next one is discuss alternate conference bridge options. Um, I put this on here, um, because I knew there was, Jess, you had concerns with it too. And this predates, we've been having problems with this bridge for, since before you were on here. Whether it's, you know, Star hits Star 21 all the time.
It doesn't do that anymore though.
No, it doesn't, uh, but we have other issues. And what a lot of people don't understand, it potentially don't understand is that this bridge actually goes over the, over the internet. So it's dependent on if we have issues, if there's a lot of people on the internet, if there's, um, um, you know, for instance, if there's, if there's a lot of traffic, it can impact the ability of, of the bridge being good. So.
Such a delay.
And there's, I don't like the 30 second delay, it makes it hard, especially for voting. Uh, so I would like to look at alternative bridge options. I know, you know, some, some municipalities use Zoom. I'm not opposed to Zoom, other than, you know, we need to be aware that, um, we don't have cameras here. So it would just be the audio portion. Zoom also offers the additional ability to, you know, store it. So it would be backup storage for the audio, which I like.
Well, we could be sharing our screen, the screen though with the board packet.
We could be sharing, yes, we could, we could see it on there, yes. But they would, there would be no video in here as well.
Sure.
Um, the only, the only hesitancy I had is most of their servers are in China. So, um, from a security standpoint, that's, that's why I've been hesitant to use Zoom. Now there, we could look to see if there's alternatives, um, since we only use the audio. But that's something for the board to think about. So, um, I can work on getting bids, different options and present to the board. I know the one we used prior to this one was just a regular conference bridge and we never had any problems with it.
That's what I'm wondering, just a phone line, I mean.
Well, it would be just a toll free number, kind of like what we do right now, it would be a toll free number, a, you know, a, a participant code and then a host code. And, um, I like to have some kind of online ability for a board clerk to interact with. She needs to meet somebody, that type of stuff. So I just wanted to see what the thoughts of it were.
I would lean to the phone line versus a. We can just talk.
For ease of use and simplicity.
Yep.
Yeah, but I, but to your point, I, I think if you go to just kind of know where the pros and cons in each option and.
Okay, so I wanted to get a consensus from you guys before we, I move forward, I'm looking into that. So you all are okay with that? I can.
Did you have something to add?
No, I'm just looking at somebody that knows lots about computers. I'm not putting them on the spot.
Share? Do we want to put them on the spot or?
Are you talking, are you not talking for the day, Mike?
Yeah.
You did the back to once, or suffered to.
Okay, so I, I can look, I can look into that and see what other options are out there. I would prefer the phone lines. And it might too, it might, I think the first place I'm gonna look is maybe our existing carriers, CenturyLink and Mediacom, they may have a product that we could use.
This is which carriers here, this building, because we've had so many phone problems. Wasn't that Mediacom?
We can do a third party. The one we used prior to Teams was, it was a completely different company, it was a third, that's all they did was conference bridges. So keep in mind though, if we do, um, we do use a different company outside of Teams, there will be costs to that. But I don't think it'll be that much. It'd be probably a couple hundred dollars a month, depending on how many teams we have. So, but I can get that, those bits together for you, let you know.
That's great, you have to have some information.
Okay, so I'll, I'll do some research into that and come back to the board with what, what I find. Um, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Um, no, other than, actually this is probably old business, but just the IT transition, um, and maybe working through that, has potential, something else we need a work session.
Uh, we're still, we're still waiting for the, the, my understanding, she's still gathering information for the onboarding. Um, it has to be back to the vendor by the 29th. So they have a chance to review, see if there's any gaps, um, and, uh, and then schedule time to meet with them.
June 29?
Yes, I'm May 29.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so, and I think, I think Terry sent that to her a few weeks ago.
She did.
Yeah.
She's working on it.
So we'll, um.
So this could potentially, um, I understand you'll be out and Diane, I saw you have a vacation coming up. I'm just trying to get my hands around what could potentially come up in the next two weeks.
Well, I'll be back, I'll be back on the 6th, well, I'll be back in town on the 6th, but I'll be back, I can, on June 9th.
I'll be back the 8th, I'll be back 4th, early in the morning. You can call me, I'm in the mountains, but you can give a shot.
I think that.
Maybe just give.
I think was, you're talking about the onsite?
Yeah, for the onsite, but just, just too many people, where are the dates you, you welcome you on?
Oh, I will be gone, um, the 28th through the 6th.
And I'm gone June 4th through the 8th. I return on Monday, the 9th.
Okay.
So I'm more weekendish, but, and you can call me, stay up if you, if you can reach me.
So, uh, I think that by the call from the onboarding checklist, the dates available were the 3rd and the 4th when we visit and then the 10th and the 11th, I think. Um, I don't really want to wait till the 10th or the 11th because if there's gaps, you know, per last days of 13th, I don't want to be doing everything last minute. So hopefully, um, she'll be able to provide that data to them by the 29th and they'll have any questions they have when they come.
And then who's escorting them? It depends on when it is.
It depends on what it is. If it's, if it's that week of the 9th, I'd be happy to do that with Jen and, um.
But if possible, possibly, uh, going to do it on June 3rd or 4th?
Right.
Okay.
And I don't know, I, I think they, I, I can follow up with Terry because I think Jen's responding to Terry because she's the one that sent it. I don't know what dates were chosen, if any, yet. So I can follow up with Terry to find out, you know, when they're gonna be onsite.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then I'll just block off those two days just in case.
Alright, um, moving on to 2025 priorities, ordinance review and update, this is just a placeholder. Any movement on that at all, Ryan?
After our, just the zoning commission that with Marvin, um, just a long time. They are set to bring us something to look at, uh, in June. So wait for them to compile something for us to, for them to review.
Okay.
Can you set a deadline for that? I think this shouldn't take a long time. You have a comp plan, you know what you need in ordinances, how long are they predicting this will take?
I think initial conversation was a year.
Yeah.
I don't think it should take more.
Well, Diane, we're kind of revamping our whole ordinances.
I know, but.
And in their contract, it actually said up to, from a year to 18 months. I don't think it's gonna take 18 months, but.
I think we need to get them done because it just gets more complicated.
I don't disagree, man, I thought it would be there yesterday, but.
Me too. We're just getting things that now are so out of compliance, we're just everything.
So one thing I wanted to bring up with the board was our moratorium on solar expires in July. So we're gonna either, we're gonna have to do a extension on that, probably in June. It's a month in June and I, I talked to you about this, Ryan. Um, he thinks that we should extend it, uh, until the ordinances are, are passed.
Oh, I'm okay.
So, uh, we could talk to the county attorney, it's better to do up until ordinances are passed, which could be longer than a year or do just a, a 12 month extension on the moratorium. Okay. What do you think?
Yeah. Send it as long as his hand can cover it.
Okay.
Is that something that you want to utilize him for in, in writing or, or is that?
Uh, the new ordinance or the moratorium extension?
The new ordinance.
Um, I think he should be part of the whole thing. And as I know, our previous county attorney has some questions on the solar ordinance before. That's why we did the moratorium because we wanted to have time to.
Yeah.
Kind of revamp it. I think that maybe giving him what the original one was is the kind of a starting point. So, you know, eliminating him, creating something out of whole block. But yeah, I definitely would engage him on that to make sure, because you want to make sure it's balanced with all the other changes and updates we're doing to the ordinances as well. And that it's compliant with our comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Were there issues with it that there was some legalities in it that maybe weren't too stringent? Is that, am I thinking, remembering that?
Yeah, I think attorney that was talked to from our previous county attorney was that there might have been some unconstitutional problems with the previous one.
But you know, we've not heard any of this.
Well, um, I think engaging with them and just give them the original one so they understand they have a starting point. And then maybe they can just tweak the things that are problematic.
Yeah.
And then if we can just pass a fix rather than a moratorium, that might be better.
True.
So.
Just tweak that because it was previous.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah. So, um, I will check with.
Does that, does that sound good? That's your.
Don't extend the moratorium?
Well, I think we should do, we should do both in tandem.
Extending and.